Seems like you guys do it, like, quite often, though. I think we need to do a better rotation.
Would you quit reminding them?
Yeah, you would.
Quit reminding them.
Oh, I know.
They're our go-to.
Okay, we can start. We're waiting for you. Yeah, you are.
Good afternoon. It is three o'clock on the 11th of July, 2023. We are in the chambers of the UNA County Commission. I'd like to welcome everybody. Reminder, please turn off your noisy devices, like the rigors on your phone. And I ask for excuse when mine goes off, because I don't know if I did or not. Okay. We will have Sherri Bolton for our prayer and Dana Brown for our pledge.
We're proud to have you in this beautiful area which we live in. We're grateful for the moisture we perceive and ask that we continue to plus this area with the moisture that it needs for this season. We're grateful for those that protect our county and that's a special blessing on police force, social rescue, fire, and both serving military in our area. We ask that that would plus our economy in this area. We ask that that would plus our businessmen, cattlemen, and petroleum contractors that we might still be able to provide for our area, support the leaders of our nation and for our campaign as a blessing. And we ask that as we discuss things in this meeting that we might be open to by will that we do those things that would be the best benefit to citizens of this county. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies, appreciate it. Commissioner Haslam has been excused. Haslam, Horix, got the right start. Horix has been excused for today's meeting in Salt Lake. Okay, we have some new people we'd like to introduce. Rick?
Turn on, is the mic on?
How's that?
That's much better.
Rick May, UNA County IT Director, introducing two new employees. We've got Erin Mackley and Darren Kelly. They're taking the IT tech positions and started a week ago Wednesday.
Okay. We are so glad to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome aboard.
Glad to be had.
Good. Welcome, welcome.
I'm sure that's a couple of gray hairs that Mike's not going to get now.
Yeah, okay.
Or Rick, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Always calling him Mike.
It works.
Rick.
He doesn't even have a brother.
At least he didn't call me Haslam.
Thank you. You know, all the way down here, I said, "Don't do that, don't do that." Sure enough. All right, we have approval of the minutes of the June 26, 2023 work session and June 27, 23 meeting.
I make a motion, we approve those minutes as stated.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye. Reporter Warrens, Mr. Wilkins. We're having a good time today, yes.
Okay. Warrants from June 29 in the amount of $804,461.41. July 7, $392,513.64. There was two I wanted to bring out just for attention. We made a payment to FKR Architects for $53,106 on the Western Park expansion of the ice rink. And then on the June 29, we had a pass, we had a billing from Vernal City for the airport for $444,505.43. This is basically a whole year's worth on that one, because they didn't bill us. So. And no claims presented on that one.
Thank you.
Tax matters, there are usual, sir.
No tax matters today, commissioners.
Great. And SRS funding presentation, sir.
We'll make this short and sweet, but this was presented yesterday, commissioners. The SRS funding, there is a total of, let me get that sheet right there, $459,500 that will be coming back to UNA County agencies, not UNA County as an agency, but to, they have Title I, Title II, and Title III funds. You get to choose where you, how much goes to each. You're limited to what can go to what. So it's presented this time, the Title I, roads and schools, 85% of the 459,500. So 390,575 split between the roads and schools. Title II is special projects on federal land, $36,760, that's 8%. And then the minimum, or the maximum amount we can give Title III, which is Fire District, which is 7%, 32,165. So with that, commissioners, I present that to you in a request. I was the one that filled out the form. So once you approve, if you'd give me the authorization to sign the form, I will get that sent into them. This has to be sent in before the 21st, so that we can, they then can submit it for payment.
Okay. I noticed you did say Title I was school district and roads?
Roads and schools.
Now, do we have that split out, or have we designated what goes where?
We designate, and then it's according to state law how much they break down. But what we figured out yesterday, it's 50/50, 50% school, 50% the road district.
Okay. Thank you.
That's of the 85%.
That's of the 85%, that is correct.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions?
Nope. I, I would make a motion that we approve the SRS funding as presented by Clerk Goddard or Wilkins.
I'll second that. Do I have any votes?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Pass. UNA County Fair Contract, Melanie.
Melanie Silcox, Western Park. Do I need to do each one of them separate?
Yes.
Please.
Okay. So the first one's for Scales and Tails, two-day performance, $32,000.
And will you tell us what that is?
The Scales and Tails?
Yeah.
It's a reptile show, it's a large exhibit. They come in, they bring multiple reptiles, and they perform a live audience that interacts with kids, they can come up and...
Do they have to have tickets, or is it just kind of a come-in?
It's a free event that we provide by the fair that lets, we set for 200 people, and it's usually full, all three performances that we do.
Where is that held?
It's inside the convention center.
Oh.
Of the Western Park part.
Oh, okay.
Oh, is it two or three performances?
Uh, well, we do two or three. Depends on how much entertainment we get accomplished, and then we arrange that schedule for them.
Okay. And they do have the ability to walk by and see them when they're still caged?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're open all day from 11 till, depends on what is happening at the fair, but usually five, sometimes a little later.
The alligator eats a kid.
We let them hold them.
And we have had, have we had all of these before that are on here, or no?
No.
Okay. So this one we have had here before, though.
Yes, we do, we have had it, we get a lot of positive feedback on it, so we tend to bring them back each year. They bring some of the same animals, some of them are different.
Is it, the price changed?
Oh, it's went up by $200 in the last 10 years, or whatever, that we've been bringing them. They, they keep it pretty low.
Great, okay.
Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the contract, the UNA County Fair contract for Scales and Tails at $32,000 for two days.
3,200.
Oh. I had thousand. Yeah. Did she say 32,000? Okay, because I'm like, wow.
The rest of that's my bonus.
Okay, I feel better now. I wasn't the only one.
That was pretty steep.
That's why we state the amount. So for $3,200 for two days of performances?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second. Any vote in discussion, or any vote, all in favor to vote?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Okay, next.
The next is the Jared Rogerson Band. We haven't had them before. They'll be on Friday night after the horse pulls to do a dance, and their cost is 3,500. And they will bring in everything. The only thing that we changed on the contract was that UNA County would not purchase any alcohol for them.
I like that. All right. That's good to me. No? No? I would make a motion, we approve the UNA County Fair contract for Jared Rogerson Band for $3,500 performance for Friday night.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Okay.
The magician.
Yep, the next one's Ron Pearson, magician, brought in by Ellen San, or he's with Ellen Sands. We've had Ellen Sands before, he was really good. We got away from him for a little while and tried somebody new, but we've had requests to bring his entertainers back, so we're bringing this one back. We haven't had a magician for several years, so this will be added to the entertainment. And the total cost is 3,500, and we can pick the amount of day, shows that he does on Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
Questions?
No. I would make a motion that we approve the contract, the UNA County Fair contract for Ron Pearson magician for $3,500 for performances on Friday and Saturday.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay. The next one is Kevin Duval, Ashley Acres Lights in Pyro, the fireworks for the Saturday night finale. The cost of that is 4,000 with a 2,000 deposit on there. And he does supply his own insurance for that event.
I can see why. And it's just the Saturday night performance, so the $2,000 deposit is part of the 4,000?
Yes.
Okay. And we, this is all within the budget of the fair, no?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Entertainer motion?
And Jonathan has looked at all four of these contracts with no issues in them.
Okay. I would make a motion then to approve the UNA County Fair contract for Kevin Duval fireworks for $4,000 for Saturday night performance.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Oh, I, aye. Any oppose? Okay.
We're only opposed if it's 32,000.
Yeah, 32,000 might be a little different.
That budget, I believe. All righty. Okay, Children's Justice Center contract amendment. Kaylin and Betty. Beatty. I know, I'll get it one of these days.
Kylan.
Kylan Beatty, Children's Justice.
Change your name.
They got my name wrong last commission meeting, too, so.
It's all the time.
So this is our annual contract renewal with the Attorney General's Office. They help fund a large portion of our program at the center. This year, we're super grateful. We were able to get more funds because of state legislation changes. Last year, we were contracted for about 150,000. This year, they are contracting for 277,000, a little bit over that. This, it says what the obligations of the Children's Justice Center is to be able to keep receiving those funds. The only thing that changed, they updated my contact information, and they updated some language in the scope of work, so everything else is pretty similar, has it, has been the last few years. John Sturmer's office has already looked at this and said it's good to go, so I just wanted to present that to you. The exact amount for this coming fiscal year for us is 277,545.
It says amendment. Is this actually an amendment, or just the annual contract?
So it's an amendment, because it's an ongoing contract, I guess if that...
So we had an existing contract that we were mending, or is this, that's what it is? Okay.
And this, the new ending date is 2027, so it's a five-year, where it used to be every year, I believe, but...
So you're getting 277,000 every year now?
Well, just for the next year, then they'll give me a new amount next July.
So it's through, did you say June 30 of 2027?
That's the contract end date.
Okay.
But they'll give me a new amount each fiscal year, so next July, I'll come with the new amount on, they calculate on how many cases and all of that, so.
Okay. And they didn't include a raise for you, huh?
They left that up to you, if you're ever so kind.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Nope.
All in favor to motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the amendment to the Children's Justice Center contract. Do I need to stay in the amount of 277,545 this year? Yes.
And I'll second that. Will call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're on, Tanya. Policy 520, alcohol and drug-free workplace.
Grievance and appeal override, so I'm trying to, can we move to grievance and appeal, and I'll see if I can, somehow it got...
Fix it?
Yeah.
Get it, find it, get it back?
So let's do 610 grievance and appeal, if that's okay.
Sure, we'll do that.
All right. So, working with the legal department, we have discussed in the past the need to bring ALJ into our grievance and appeal policy in certain matters for the protection of the employees, to be able to bring an administrative law judge, an ALJ, into the process. And we spoke about this yesterday in the workshop, work session. Oh, I need to plug in, sorry, I forgot. I'm just all a mess today.
I was going to say, and Rick left, so if you need IT help, we're in trouble.
No, let me plug in. There we go. I don't know if, oh. Are any of the TVs on? Here. Got one on?
This one is on up here.
Okay.
All right.
So...
Does your screen come up?
Do you have a remote? Oh, that one came on.
Yep, we're, do you, are you guys?
I guess we're okay, because...
Okay. That's fine.
And if I, there is no way I can jump up on the counter and...
No, we have our up here on our thing.
Yeah, we've got them all up here, we can see them.
We're okay, Mike.
Okay.
We're good, thanks for the...
All right. So scrolling all the way down, there was just a section in number 10, under administrative law judge, where we added C, in matters of reduction in pay, demotions, or terminations shall be referred to administrative law judge. And in grievance and appeals, Policy 610, this was the only update that was discussed, and we're requesting be added to Policy 610. So that's the only change that you're seeing today, as discussed yesterday.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Motion?
I would make a motion that we approve this change as number 10, item C in Policy 610, the grievance and appeal.
I'll second.
Perfect.
Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Now, see if you can get back. All right, now. It says 520, but when I click on it, it is telling me 610. Oh, no! Woohoo! Yay!
Okay.
Getting excited. I love it when technology works. Okay, so scrolling down, let's see if it's the right one. Perfect. It's been one of those days, so thank you. Tanya HR, by the way. So under number two responsibilities of the employee, with looking at the way cannabis, medical marijuana is being viewed with the state law and the broad definition of medications, with discussing with legal, with Teagan and John, the language of including marijuana being in parentheses, it was decided, or being requested, that that language be removed because it is being encompassed under medications. And this was discussed and in broad yesterday as well, and hopefully the questions were answered. If there are any others, we can entertain those. And then going further into the policy, there were a couple of other areas. Under search and seizure, number six, it discusses where, or had given the ability for county directors or employees to be able to go in and actually do searches and look into the employees' properties, personal properties, and things of that nature. And after discussing with legal, we also came into an agreeance that if this situation came into a rise, that it would be better determined to contact law enforcement and request that they conduct those searches, so that if anything were to come, that all of that would be to be documented and have all of the appropriate things in place, as opposed to referring to a department hand to put that into their hands and to put them into that situation and ask them to do those things. So we're asking that that stuff be stricken from the policy as well, and to just request that if something like that happens, that we obviously just rely on our law enforcement to do those things. And then under miscellaneous conditions, A, employees who distribute alcohol, drugs, or drug paraphernalia on UNA County premises shall be terminated. Additionally, unlawfully possessing the same shall be subject to termination. And that was also discussed yesterday as well. And then those are the updates requested for change for this policy.
Any questions?
No.
Call for motion?
Would make that motion, that we approve the changes to Policy 520, alcohol and drug free workplace. I guess it starts with number, would you go down to those?
Policy 520, and it starts, let me scroll down. Starts in section two responsibilities, yes.
Yeah, 2A, and the other one is, what's the other one that the changes are in?
The other one is...
Six and 7A.
Yes.
Okay. I would make that motion.
I'll second. Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
All right, thank you, and appreciate it.
We'll have resolution number 07-10-2023 R1 to discontinue transportation services from UNA Special Service District 1.
Do you want me to go down there, or?
You're fine right there, we know you.
Okay.
As long as your mic's on.
Is my, yeah. Okay. Teagan Troutner with the UNA County Attorney's Office, I am standing in for John, who couldn't make it today. So yesterday in work session, resolution number 710, 2023 R1 was discussed, and it was a resolution that was made, or drafted at the request of Commissioner Norton, where it would remove, so back in 2020, the commission had consolidated the Recreation, Transportation, and Impact Mitigation Special Service Districts all into one special service district, which was special service district number one, and now it's UNA Special Service District 1. And we were in the process, the county was in the process, and the special service district was in the process of dissolving the three special service districts. Now we have a new commission, and it's the, it's our understanding that the new commissioners want to now put the transportation services with the undissolved UNA Transportation Special Service Districts, so we would have Recreation and Impact mitigation. we would have Recreation and Impact Mitigation in one, and then the Transportation District would be moved back, and all those services would be moved back to the Transportation District. Um, and, let's see, John had some other.
When will it become effective?
And it would become effective on December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three. Um, and John had said that if you had any questions, um, that he would suggest tabling this for next week, when he can be present to answer them. I wasn't a part of drafting this or anything, so I don't, I will be unable to answer any of your questions.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay. With that, I'll take a resolution, not a resolution, a motion.
Um, I move that we approve Resolution Number zero seven dash one zero dash two zero two three R one to discontinue transportation services from UNA Special Service District One.
And I will second that. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution has passed. Now comes the time for public comment. You have three minutes for a total of ten minutes involved here. If anyone has a public comment, please come forth. You gotta break the ice sometime, huh?
Jeremy Raymond, uh, Director of UNA Fire District. I just want to thank the commission to allocate the Title Three money, uh, SRS funds to UNA Fire District. We use that money for, uh, projects, uh, in the county. So communities, White Rocks, um, Tridell, La Pointe, um, Vernal, Jensen, all over throughout the county. We do mitigation work, and so we clear defensible space around homes. Uh, we also promote the Be Fire Wise Campaign with the, um, federal government in helping to educate homeowners that live in fire-prone areas to help, uh, reduce the risk of wildfires, so. Appreciate the money, and, um, we've also used some of that money to equip our firefighters with equipment, uh, wildland gear as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, close the public comment. Do I have a motion?
I have a, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Have a good day, people. Thank you.